Eleven B.
Sure.
We have folks here and we'll get them in and out.
I'll make a motion to prove the agenda as amended with the new topic of Oakland County Funding Agreement for Restaurant Contributions, eleven B, and move everything down accordingly.
I'll second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Nold. Are there any questions? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Public comment on items not on the agenda.
We got the consent agenda.
Oh, I wrote right over that. Sorry. Thank you, guys.
I'll make a motion to prove the consent agenda as presented.
I second that.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Charles. Are there any questions? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Nold.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes, and Supervisor Curtis.
Yes. Item number six, public comment on items not on the agenda. Are there any members of the public that would like to make a comment on any item that's not on the agenda? Seeing none. We'll move on to item number seven. First reading sewer ordinance one zero seven A dot zero zero eight.
Clerk Wright. Yeah, the sewer ordinance has been presented to you with several amendments in that. Included in your packet is the colored variation and also a clean copy that's proposed for a second reading. Couple points to make within that ordinance is we changed a lot of the language in the ordinance. Some of them were updating like the DEQ to Eagle, the Oakland County Drain Commissioner to Water Resources Commissioner, and changing some of the responsibilities from the Building Inspector to the Engineer, the way the process has been flowing. Also, a couple of the appendices have been amended, and you'll see ordinance eighty-four as an appendix C to the ordinance. As well as that, the billing and collection has been amended to more suit the flow of the billing in the township offices. So we're not locked into certain days. On that, a couple of points I want to bring to the board's attention is on page ninety-six of the the electronic version. There's an item in here on section sixty-two, eighty-three, and it is item, let me see what it is, item C. Scroll down there a little bit.
It's the page ninety-six?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it is. Yeah, page ninety-six, it talks about extensions and changes. It indicates, starting on the third line, petitions for the construction of new sanitary sewer laterals shall be addressed to the Township Board upon blank forms provided for that purpose. In the research between Attorney Rentrup, Attorney Morrison, and myself, we were not able to locate whether or not there's blank forms provided. So either that needs to be struck from the ordinance, or that blank form needs to be created. So that's one item to be addressed before the second reading. The other item that I want to bring to the board's attention is on page one oh six of the electronic, the new appendix A. We will need a new sanitary sewer map from Engineer Sharp because up here in the railroad area, this map does not show the additional area that we included for the Lovey Properties and also down on Drainer Road for the Silverado development down there. And there might be other ones, Engineer Sharp, that you may be aware of that I'm not. But those are two things that did stand out in the review since we received it back and was put in the packet.
That'd be the Clearview property.
Yeah, what did I say?
Silverado.
Silverado, yeah, okay, thank you.
I'll just make a note.
Yeah, okay, good, good. But other than that, I don't know if there's any other comments for the board of that. But also, just one more item is that a lot of the numbers were from the pre-codified version of the ordinance, one oh seven. For those sections, and those have been updated to reflect into the codified ordinance as well. So that's pretty much my comments. Supervisor Curtis?
Are there any more comments?
I have a quick question then.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wright, you said that either create a form or strike it, right, on that?
Yeah, the blank form.
I captured that note, and I'm gonna create a blank form for the sewer extension.
I move to set a second reading and possible adoption of sewer ordinance one oh seven A point zero zero eight at the April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, Charter Township Oxford Board of Trustees' regular meeting.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Nold. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Roll call.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Nold.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes, and Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Okay, now, item number eight, Fire Department. We don't have anything on the agenda tonight. Item number nine, Engineer Sharp. Do you have anything to report tonight?
Nothing additional, Your Honor.
Wait, I'm the president. Thank you.
It doesn't stop here, does it?
No. Item ten, unfinished business. American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, use of funds. Clerk Wright.
The one forty-three of the electronic. The American Rescue Plan Act, as we abbreviate it as ARPA, has met, and if I can get to the item here. We put in the packet what the board has approved already, and that's been seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of board-approved appropriations. And we met last week, Trustee Nolan, Trustee Payne, and myself, and we had some remaining funds left over, two hundred sixty-five thousand, six hundred ninety-four dollars and three cents, to be exact. So what we are recommending to the Township Board is to appropriate two hundred thousand dollars for, we'll call it, proposed fire station number three because it appears that's what's going to happen on that property. The reason why we want that is we would like to get a operational facility, not building-wise, but to get the well drilled and get a drive-in there that would allow for emergency vehicles to utilize that wall for fire purposes. So we feel with that appropriation that it would at least let that process get started and potentially get something in place for the northern part of the township. The remaining funds, there's been a lot of requests or recommendations that the committee look at trying to appropriate funds for COVID losses from the businesses, from being shut down and not being able to get revenues to keep their businesses going. Also, there's been a little bit of a side of the incident that took place at the high school back in November, and we've contacted MTA, and they indicated that that's not a possibility to use this money for funding private organizations. So what the committee's looking for is to get legal counsel, an experienced legal counsel, that can actually give us some guidance on how we can potentially get monies to these businesses. But since then, it's also looking at maybe that this request should be expanded, not just to the businesses, but to maybe even what we've already looked at to go back and make sure that we're on solid ground to actually make these appropriations for the sewer extension and the fire radials, et cetera. So what we're looking at is to get approval for the two hundred thousand dollars for the fire station, and then approval to have legal counsel give us some guidance back with some of the monies that are left over.
Okay, I want to comment. First, one of the proper allocations of fund, back up, go the other way to the bottom. One of the allocations of funding can be for legal counsel to provide guidance and to protect us in our decisions that we've made to spend the money on. Should they come back and say, what did you do? You did something illegal. We have money set aside for attorney cost to justify in a court of what we did. So I'm trying to help you along here. I see two hundred thousand dollars for the proposed funding of fire station three and a blank for legal counsel guidance. So how much are you putting in that for the blank? The sixty-five? The remainder of the two hundred thousand we have left, and then wait for the second injection of the million?
The blank, for me, as one of the committee members, is for the board to decide how much that needs to be. I'm not looking for the whole sixty-five thousand dollars remaining to go for legal counsel. But two other members of the committee are here that can probably give some comment and their take.
That's how I look, Your Honor. Yes, Trustee Payne.
I would think the cost would be much less than that, and I'd like to see us put in a cost not to exceed.
Okay.
As far as a number, I'll pull it out of the air, I don't know. Seven thousand, ten thousand.
Okay, Trustee Nold?
When we were in the meeting, we talked to number five thousand, but I would go with the not to exceed seven thousand or five thousand. Whatever the board's comfortable with.
Yeah.
Whatever the board's comfortable with. Questions? Yes, sir.
Would it be appropriate to ask the opinion of Attorney Rentrup right now, what that might be, since that's your business life? What it might be to hire some attorney?
Jack did talk to me about it. I said, look, I can invent the wheel, but there's probably someone already out there that hasn't invented the wheel. I would just suggest you probably contact Miller Canfield, who's doing the bond work. And my guess is they've got somebody that's just, that's what they're doing, and your estimate is probably fairly close.
Five thousand?
Five, I'd go five to, five to seven fifty.
Yeah, let me, let me take over here. I talked to several attorneys, and I asked a few larger firms who they're doing and what they're doing. One of our attorneys that we can, or authorized to use, is doing five municipalities in one city. So not reinventing the wheel, like Gary said. The suggestion was five to seven thousand five hundred. So if you'd want to put that in the motion not to exceed for legal counsel and guidance, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I move to allocate American Rescue Plan Act funds for the following: two hundred thousand dollars for funding for proposed fire station number three, and not to exceed eight thousand dollars for legal counsel guidance to provide direction for the ability to provide American Rescue Plan Act funds to qualifying Oxford businesses that provide the resources to the Oxford community following the incident at the Oxford High School.
Okay.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Payne. Any questions? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Nolan.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
And Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Item ten B. We're putting our new trustee on the spot tonight. A review of the administrative fees for two thousand twenty-two. We had a committee meeting, and would you like to report out on that, Trustee Colvin?
Sure. The committee met, and we did some benchmarking of local townships on how they did their administrative fees. We also did some, looked into how these departments utilize township resources, and based on that, we decided to allocate the administrative fee charges as listed.
I move to approve the following administrative fee charges for two thousand twenty-two to the following entities: four thousand five hundred dollars billing department, four thousand one hundred dollars cable TV, six thousand dollars fire fund, five thousand one hundred dollars parks and rec, eighteen thousand police contracting, one thousand one hundred Paliant Trail, seven thousand six hundred fire, excuse me, sewer fund.
Okay, I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Colvin. Are there any questions? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Nold.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
No.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles.
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis.
Yes. Motion carried. Ten C, two thousand twenty-two Oakland County Gypsy Moth twenty twenty-two Oakland County Moth Suppression Grant Program Resolution. Trustee Charles, did you want to take that on, please?
Sure. And first of all, we all know now, because we want to be correct, that it's now called Spongy Moth. So if anyone wants to turn in our supervisor, then please do so. Curtis Wright and I and the committee for the Spongy Moth Committee, I guess we're calling it now, and we spent a lot of time and effort looking for gypsy moths. We've had a number of meetings. Suppression is the key word because you can't eliminate, I want to say gypsy moss, but you know what I mean, spongy moss. So where we stand right now, and a lot of this goes back over a year, but we've reviewed the entire township. We've looked at the acreage. We've got about, let's see here, four hundred and forty-five point nine acres that we've identified that have infestation, divided into three different blocks. Last year, we recorded a hundred and forty bucks an acre to do the spraying. I talked with the people at MSU this afternoon. They have not finished with their bidding process. Right now, they've had one bid. It's the same person who's done it for a number of years. And maybe Commissioner Spiz can go on a minute and fill us in. But right now, we've got, like I said, four hundred and forty-five point nine acres. We've got money set aside, and I guess at this point, let me turn over to Commissioner Spiz, since he's been very helpful having the county get involved with this. And he's aching to speak.
I get more than enough opportunity to speak, so thank you. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board. From a spongy moth standpoint, the program, all the maps from all the entire communities within Oakland County would do, I believe it's Tuesday. The quotes were all due in yesterday, and we only did get one bidder, and it's the bidder that MSU extension has used for years, so, which was good. The number came in, I think, was roughly a hundred and twenty dollars an acre. So based on the numbers we're getting from all the other communities that are going to participate, so the application and the timing has been rolled out. You guys should all be aware of that. And once you get your application in, and once everybody gets all their big working, bats your i's, crosses your t's, we'll get the spraying all set up through MSU extension. And then, once everything's taken care of and spray's done, you'll get your reimbursement. You get your grant or reimbursement for up to thirty thousand dollars from the county.
Very good. And once again, thanks to Commissioner Spiz for helping us get the matching grant, by the way. That should be noted by everybody. It saves us a lot of money. Thirty thousand dollars, if my memory's correct, is that right?
Yeah, up to thirty thousand dollars per community, and you can do a spray. You can do a mechanical treatment. You can do a ground spray. There's many different treatments that are approved through the grant program. And I think roughly, we have about eight different communities that are participating in different types of litigation.
Okay, suppression, whatever else. But I looked at a hundred and twenty-five bucks an acre, which is more than what you just quoted. Yeah, we're paying fifty-seven seventy-two an acre, which is a far cry from last year. We were quoted a hundred and forty bucks an acre, so we've saved a few dollars here and there. So we go out and spray more if we wish. And that's including the thirty thousand that you have to arrange. And part of the process to get reimbursed is to have a resolution from the township. So would this be a good time to read that resolution, Supervisor Curtis, or should we just record it?
I move to approve the resolution of compliance with the two thousand twenty-two Oakland County Moth Suppression Grant Program as presented.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Charles. I'm losing my scope here. Any questions? Seeing none. Roll call.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Nold.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
And Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, I'll take the next one. As ladies and gentlemen, we board members, as you're aware, there were twenty-eight trees removed from the Oxford Township Cemetery earlier this year. I have a wholesale nursery quote to take these trees down, or after we take these trees down, to replace the twenty-eight trees with smaller caliber trees. I have a guest here tonight, Mr. Tetter. If you'd like to step up.
Thank you, Supervisor Curtis and members of the board. My name is Jim Tetter. I'm an area manager with ITC Michigan. We're a utility company that owns the transmission lines throughout the township. And in communicating with Supervisor Curtis and other members of the board, and seeking a way and an opportunity perhaps to support the township with all the hardship that you and the residents have endured over the several months, it will be our privilege to cover the costs. I believe Supervisor Curtis suggested around five thousand dollars will be our privilege to cover the cost of the planting of those trees, and if the opportunity permitted itself, we would certainly like to bring some volunteers along to help with the planting effort as well.
Wow, great. Wow, that's great. Thank you very much. I move to accept the donation from ITC Power Transmission Company for, what did you say the number was, Jim?
Five thousand dollars.
Five thousand dollars to replace the twenty-eight trees that had to be removed from the Oxford Township Cemetery.
I'll second that.
You have a motion by Supervisor Curtis, a second by Trustee Charles. Any questions?
Just a quick comment.
That's appropriate. Tell me your comment.
I appreciate Mr. Tetter coming here. Appreciate this. I'm sure we all do, but we've known Mr. Tetter for a number of years. Privilege to know, Jim, so this is an example of why Jim is widely respected in our, in our community. So, Jim, thank you very much. I know you led the effort to get this money for Oxford Township. You know, he contacted us a few times and, just to let you know.
Well, thank you. It's our privilege.
You thought he was going to push you out, did you?
Thank you, Jim. Thank you very much.
Now, Jim, there's an opportunity to show him a wrestling move. Yeah, you missed it.
My days are gone.
I got one good one left, so.
Yeah, but that's called prone.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you both, by the way.
I'll, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Thanks again, Jim, and thank the folks at ITC. I will get back with you. I've got the list from Steinkoff. We're going to try to pick a selection of trees out that aren't all one type, so we can mitigate any mass disease in the future, if you will. Thank you. Okay, item B, eleven B. Oh, this one's a good one, too. Commissioner Spiz, you want to come back up? And tell us about a grant from the Oakland County Board that you've got.
Thank you again, Mr. Supervisor and the board. Thank you, everybody. Just fully aware of the incident happened back in November of last year. The Oakland County Board of Commissioners allocated five million dollars out of the fund balance to help support Oxford and their needs over that timeframe. Some of that money is to prosecute the demons or the evil people that did what they did that day. But some of the other money was put aside to help the businesses. So part of that is a hundred thousand dollars that the County Board of Commissioners put aside to help the businesses that opened their doors, did everything they could to help support the residents, the victims, and everybody through those days from November thirtieth, I think it is, to January twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth.
There's a lot of people, there's a lot of discussion. We would have liked to have got this money out a lot sooner, but unfortunately, after going through the avenues of government to make this stuff happen. There was a lot of input from many different people. Superintendent Curtis was there. The Legacy Center was there. There's a lot of businesses that, probably too many for me to list here today, and not only in Oxford, but in the county, that above and beyond help support, and many put their businesses at risk from a financial perspective, and that's what the intent of this grant money is for, is to give a little back to those businesses and make sure they can keep their doors open and continue to support those in need here in Oxford. With that, what we did as a county, we allocated direct to Oxford Township. Right? We felt that was the best way to get that money out to those businesses the fastest. Because otherwise, the county would have to contract with each and all those businesses, and then we'd get into a paperless nightmare. Whereas if we go through Oxford Township, we have the county can write a single check and allow you guys to manage that as you see fit.
I agreed to accept the money. This board has to approve me accepting the money, and then we're going to take myself, Joe Mador, village manager, Commissioner Spiz, and Supervisor Barnett, and verify the list of restaurants that are eligible, and come up with a possible payment of each one. It is a gift. It is non-taxable, and it's to replenish what was given and not gotten through their gifts. So I applaud you. Thanks for our hard work. I know we only had, what, three hundred and twenty-five phone calls on this, and it was, it was tough to get through, but we got it. It was, it was good to get.
It was my honor.
Thank you. Yes.
Is it, are the funds going to be prorated across the board equally, or is it depending on what?
We don't know.
From, from the grant itself, there are some guidelines in there.
Yes.
Up to five thousand dollars.
I saw that. I saw that.
That's why we did that, because there may be different levels that is decided by Oxford Township to allocate. Some might get a thousand, some might get twenty-five hundred, some might get five thousand. It depends on, on the level of support maybe that business gave it.
Okay.
If I could help with the answer to that question, the preliminary list that you all saw in my email, that was started back in January to get Michael, to get these, Commissioner Spiz, to get these funds moving off out of their budget. So it is not a complete list. It is not the list. It's just an example of the number of folks that did give and how we could come up with some sort of a fund and prove that we did have this many donations in the community. So let me jump down to Trustee Charles.
So how do you plan on identifying which businesses, in addition to those, might be eligible?
We, we have many lists of people through witnessing, of the acts of the food coming to places, like the schools, like the township, like the village, like the police.
So you have existing lists, is what you're saying?
We're, we're going to review the existing list and possibly add to it, and this motion and resolution only includes local.
And are you going to advertise that you're looking for it, or just by word of mouth?
No, we're not going to advertise. We're going to take, through experience and witnessing, who gave what and who did what.
And what kind of validation are you going to ask of these folks that might have lost money?
It's in the resolution. They have to provide some sort of proof. So we have proof of who did what, but how much they did, we don't have the proof of.
And let me also add, I mean, a hundred thousand dollars from numbers I have seen is nowhere near the amount of effort or monies, time, et cetera, that these businesses around this community put in.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Let me just give you like one example. For everything Legacy did, this is like when you step back from that, there is no business history of mankind has ever closed their business inviting the competition into their business to compete against them. Because what Legacy does, especially in terms of like the catering and all that, they know their caterers there. Nobody's ever done that. You can't go to Petrozell's and say, can you please close down and bring Club Monte Carlo into your place to help do business? That doesn't happen. Nobody brings in a direct competition and pays for them to be there. I mean, that's, that's incredible. I've never heard that before.
Michael, there are other avenues we are chasing to offset some of these.
Yeah, there are potential other revenue streams that are being worked on at other government levels, I'll put it that way, right? And the intent is if those monies do come in through Oakland County, is we will be having this discussion again to help further reimburse some of those businesses that well beyond what five thousand dollars will even touch.
I agree.
Clerk Wright.
Yeah, in the, in the agreement, there, there's a blank in there for the expiration of this agreement. What date are we supposed to put in there?
It was June, isn't it? In the contract, wasn't it June?
I thought it was.
There's a timeline that this had to occur with English, was November thirtieth through January twenty-fourth.
That was.
That's the boundaries that were put around the support. But from that timeframe, I mean, from my perspective, I'll, if anyone wants to check it here, I'll get that out as soon as possible. But I would say everything should be done and completed before we.
So we should insert June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two?
Sure, for expiration.
Okay. Because that's part of what a proposed motion is. The other questions I have is certificates of insurance. Those are just our liability insurance certificates, what the county would be looking for. And then the filing with the Secretary of State, is that done by both parties, or is the county doing that on our behalf? That's one of the requirements in the agreement. The agreement is filed with the Michigan Secretary of State.
That would be this resolution.
Yeah, it would be the resolution. So it's just paperwork.
The agreement is the resolution.
But who's filing it to the?
The township would be based on what you said, right?
I mean, both parties filing this to the Michigan Secretary of State? Okay. Okay, all right. And then, and then in the, the exhibit, it puts a lot of onus on the grants to communication managers on, on this document. Is there like a blanket report that goes to the county that that can be used? Or is that something that you just report on the documents you have and send it in?
I'd like to confirm if they have a blanket format.
All right.
I'm sure we do. That'll get you the information you need to make sure you make the appointment.
Yeah, I'll just get it to Supervisor Curtis and, because you guys are working on that. Then it says, grantee must be for profit businesses of fifty employees or less.
Correct.
Now, would that disqualify in this case the Legacy Center?
They don't have fifteen employees.
Well, that, that, the Legacy Center we're not talking about because they didn't contribute food.
Okay.
The Legacy Center contributed rent.
Okay.
That's the grants we're chasing for that. And any other business who donated. This is specifically, this is specifically material items from local businesses under fifty employees for the period of November thirtieth to January twenty-fourth.
I move to approve the Oakland County interlocal agreement, agreement between Oakland County and Oxford Township as presented. And the agreement shall expire at eleven fifty-nine fifty-nine PM on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, per section ten point one of the agreement. And any notices per section twenty-one point two of this agreement shall be addressed and sent to Jack Curtis, Supervisor, Charter Township of Oxford, three hundred Dunlap Road, Oxford, Michigan, four eight three seven one. And Supervisor Jack Curtis, Clerk Curtis W. Wright are authorized to sign the agreement on behalf of the Charter Township of Oxford.
I'll second. Okay, I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari and a second by Trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes, and Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Spiz.
Thank you.
Look forward to getting together.
I think we should invite Mr. Spiz and Mr. Tetter back every, every month.
Well.
We won't be very distant.
All right, moving on. This would be item C. The resignation, Charlie Farley is our ordinance enforcement officer resignation. Charlie gave his two weeks' notice in what, did you get a copy of that? Charlie says, regrets to inform, inform you of my intention to resign my position as code enforcement official for the Charter Township of Oxford. The effective date of my resignation will be March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Thank you for your time and consideration involving this matter. Board members, what I'm looking to do is to replace Charles Farley, the ordinance officer, upon his resignation.
I move to approve the resignation of Oxford Township Ordinance Enforcement Officer Charles Farley with regrets, effective March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Further, Supervisor Jack Curtis is authorized to recruit and select a candidate to fill the Oxford Township Ordinance Enforcement Officer vacancy.
I'll second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, we'll move on to item D. Ah, Mr. Rentrup, M twenty-four sewer line construction special assessment district.
Water Sewer Committee has been working on this for some time now. We've met with the property owners that will be subject to the special assessment district, which is illustrated on the, on your screen. The, the SAD extending the sewer line up at the east side of twenty-four to Ray Road was prompted by the fact that there is a line under twenty-four now that services some of the businesses that is, is failing. And so, it became a question, and there's limited capacity in that line. So, it became a question of, are you better off putting money into tearing up that line and replacing that line or constructing a new line that would service additional properties up twenty-four? And the decision was made that it's, it makes better physical sense to put in a new line that would service other properties. In doing that, that meant that the, that the properties currently existing have, which have paid their fees, or already paid their connection fees, would not be part of that SAD, albeit they would be entitled to utilize that line. So, having said that, the, the, a letter was sent from the Water Sewer Committee to the various property owners, inviting them to advise whether or not they would like to participate in an SAD to start an SAD process that can be quickly reversed. It requires fifty-one percent of the property owners. Fifty-one percent of the property owners did request the SAD go forward. So, this is the first, first, there's a series of four board meetings that's required under the SAD process. This is the first four meetings. This is a, it's a tentative resolution whereby you're working with the numbers that Jim has done his best he can in terms of estimating costs, and you, but it's, you're not final on. So, if these numbers are changed, as more information is gained, what, what the cost is going to be. So, we prepared a resolution, a draft resolution, which should be in your packet, that outlines what needs to take place. This will be the first, before, as I mentioned, the second. And this is considered the initial tentative resolution to establish SAD, which establishes the district of the boss. Second meeting will occur on, is projected to occur on April thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, which will be a public hearing to hear objections to, to the proposed SAD. Then the township needs to go to work with the assistance of Jim Sharp and Sharp Engineering to complete the survey design work, get permit from Eagle, and to prepare bid documents to go out. The, Jim advises the better pricing is going to occur not during the summer months, but during the winter months. So, we are going to delay going out for bids until January to hopefully get a better price. Once all the costs are determined, the supervisors prepare a proposed special assessment role. This becomes more the final role of the numbers in the district. Meeting number three occurs, and they decide whether or not to accept bids. That, that is going to occur, projected to occur probably late January, is it? I think it's late January here.
Do you have the well-prepared timeline, Jim?
Yeah, I do. Bid documents are prepared, and bidding goes out on one, one twenty-three to two twenty-eight twenty-three. Then there is a fourth meeting, which will occur after all this takes place. And that meeting, there will be a public hearing to hear objections to the assessment role and decide whether or not to confirm the role. A person objecting to the assessment role will file the objection writing with the township clerk before the close of the hearing. After the hearing, the township board, or the same, at a subsequent meeting, may confirm the special assessment role. And that's, that means it's a done deal at this point. There is one caveat, because this is really kind of a hybrid special assessment. Because those properties are currently serviced by Sewer Kent are not participating in the process, there is a notion that the township would continue to contribute a cost somewhat less than what the cost of replacing that line would be. Because if they had to replace the line under the, under the roadway, that would be an obligation of the township. So, they'll contribute an amount, at this point in time, estimated to be three hundred thousand dollars towards the total cost. Further, it is paying for those participating in the special assessment district. We prepared a, what we call an incentive agreement, which gives the right of a property owner who may have the assessed. Assessment's based on acreage, and then the acreage is converted, converted to REUs, residential equivalent units, which Jim has put together. And if a party, for example, needed fewer than the REUs, which are being allocated, and what the cost is allocated on, that party could sell the REUs at a later, later date. The township has a right of first refusal, because it might be in township's best interest to buy up those excess REUs. That agreement is somewhat unique and novel, so we do not, I don't know why it wouldn't survive. But in case it doesn't, there's a bailout provision for the township that if it's determined by the court to be an unenforceable agreement, or if an opinion is rendered by legal counsel that it's unenforceable, the township's not obligated to do, to enforce that agreement. So, I, I think it's a pretty good package. Jim has done an excellent job of pulling all the pieces together. And the Water Sewer Committee have been diligent in pursuing these properties.
Okay, I want to address two more things, and I'm going to list, I'm going to ask Treasurer Ferrari. We also have an area of homes that are underserved by sewer. And right now, these homes are losing their septics. We have grant manager, our communications and grants manager is chasing several grants through Oakland County and through the Michigan Economic Development Company. So, we are taking this line up to the Dunlap Road, which could get us into the area of underserved sanitary sewer. So, that, that is another, one of the reasons besides our failing sewer line that's on there in hopes of also sewer-ing our northern industrial zone properties and our commercial zone properties. So, with that, we are looking for a motion for assessment resolution number one.
I move to approve the special assessment resolution number one, including Exhibits A, B, and C as presented. Regarding a sanitary sewer project commencing from an existing manhole located the southwest corner of parcel oh four twenty-two two hundred zero zero four, extending northerly to a point near the intersection of Apier Road and Dunlap Road.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, and I have a second by Trustee Noel. I know I have questions. I'm going to start with Clerk Wright.
Yeah, just, just a point for Attorney Rentrup. Um, I just have, have to notice, on Exhibit C, it might be on Exhibit B as well. It indicates that the parcels are particularly described as, it only has a parcel ID number. Should that be indicated as identified as versus described? When you go down farther, that's technically a particularly described description of the, those two parcels on the bottom of that exhibit. Maybe Engineer Sharp has an opinion on that as well.
I'm, I'm okay with the law. We got to understand your distinction. From a practical point of view, it's probably a little bit better to say identified as, of course, described by. I, I, having said that, the law clearly allows you to identify the property by parcel.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And the reason that the lower portion is not by parcel is because those are a part of the levy parcels, which is, I don't know, twelve hundred acres, and they just want to split off a little piece.
The portion, okay.
An actual individual parcel that we could just assign a number to, otherwise they would all just be numbered. But those are parts of those parcels.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, sir, Trustee Charles.
Three hundred thousand dollars is what the township would potentially contribute.
The three hundred thousand dollars was allocated out of the ARPA funds. Our commitment to design, engineering, and permitting of this, and it's our contribution, knowing we would have to repair the sewer line under M twenty-four.
Another question, procedural, my own lack of knowledge on SADs. How is this different from a normal SAD for, let's say, lakes or roads and?
I'll ask Mr. Rentrup to address that for us.
No difference. Same concept, same statutes, been around. I came to Water Sewer Committee with a memo dated nineteen ninety. It's, and it was applicable in nineteen ninety, so it is today. The process is the same.
So, if we treat a lake, it's the same form meeting process?
Yes.
And is it fifty-one or fifty point one potentially? Just, I know that's being picky.
It's actually twenty-three, twenty-three percent, I think, is, but they can then reverse it by a vote of fifty-one. So, it's always advised, well, to get the fifty-one percent out of it.
Good.
Yep.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
And Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Boy, you guys must have a great chairman on that Water Sewer Committee. Okay, item eleven E. That's right, eleven E. Board members, I want to provide you with an update of an emergency sanitary sewer repair that occurred in February twenty twenty-two. The pump at Glass Lake Sanitary Lift Station, located near the top of the attached map, right up around the number sixteen. It, it failed, causing an emergency and needed to be replaced. The Water and Sewer Committee voted at their February tenth, twenty twenty-two meeting, that was the day after the Township Board meeting, to approve the Oakland County Water Resources Commission to install a new pump at a cost not to exceed ten thousand dollars. Again, this is above the three thousand five hundred dollar limit that I have to spend, or we have to spend. And our board meeting minutes attached shows that we were granted the permission to go out and do an emergency repair and then report on it after we've done the repair. So, what we're coming to you tonight is we did the emergency repair, and we're announcing that we did it for under ten thousand dollars. I don't think there's a motion required.
I'll just get the board ratify it. Do you mind?
No.
I'll make a motion that, that we ratify the Oxford Township Water and Sewer Committee vote on February tenth, twenty twenty-two meeting relating to the Glass Lake Sewer Lift Station pump replacement.
A second? That's moved by Treasurer Ferrari, second by Trustee Noel. Roll call, please.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes, and Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Okay, item eleven F, sanitary sewer resolution.
The, the resolution in front of you was originally in the ordinance. And reviewing that with Attorney Rentrup and Attorney Morrison, it was decided to pull this out of the ordinance because of a lot of different numbers that are involved, including escrow money, charity bonds, liability insurance amounts, and their connection fees, REUs schedule, quarterly usage charges, and meter charges, inspection fees. So, by doing that as a resolution, you can approve it just as, as part of the Township Board meeting minutes. You don't have to go through a first and second reading. So, it's felt that it was to be pulled out and approved separately. So, as you look at the attachment, I don't have it, oh, I can do that. You'll see several items that were in color that were changed. So, scroll down through here, and you can see the, the changes that were made in the, in the document. So, this cleaned up a lot of the, a lot of the issues, it updated it. For example, sewer connection fees were at twenty-five and thirty-five hundred. Now, they're at the fixed five thousand amount. So, so it's presented to you. If you have any questions or comments on it, or a motion to approve.
I mo, I move to approve the resolution regarding Article three of Chapter sixty-two, sewers and sewage disposal. The Oxford Township Court of Ordinances as presented.
A second? I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
And Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Okay, item eleven G, procurement policy. Right now, board members, we do not have a procurement policy in place. Pardon me? Pardon me?
I was just, she says, what page?
Oh. What we found in writing grants, some of our fire grants that we're writing right now require the township to have a procurement policy. The grant, the persons, the people who give the grants out need to see a procurement policy. There's one going on right now at the Fire Department, and it is good common practice to have a procurement policy in place. So what I volunteered to do with Clerk Wright is to present a draft to the Township Board at the next meeting of a newly adopt, to adopt a newly written procurement policy. And what we've attached is a simple one, a copy from Orion Township, just so that you get an idea of what we're looking to do. Are there any questions?
I move to direct Clerk Curtis Wright and Supervisor Jack Curtis to present a draft Oxford Township procurement policy at the April 13th, 2022 Township Board meeting for consideration of approval.
I'll second.
I have a, a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed, hearing none. Motion is approved. Item 6H, safety paths repairs and bid recommendations.
Board members, the Safety Path Committee met, we put out the repairs early this year, hopefully get the better prices to repair some of our areas on the safety path. We got a low bid for 209,000 roughly from HG Sarter. Engineer Sharp checked them out, evidently they're a well-known company from that part of the county, and we would recommend that we proceed with the repairs. One thing different is the motion's going to change because the, any type of repairs of safety path comes out of general fund, not safety path. I move to approve the recommendation from Sharp Engineering and award the 2022 Safety Path Rehabilitation Project to HG Sarter at the base bid amount of 209,110. This 209,110 base bid amount is to be expensed to the general fund, account number 101231933.297.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Payne. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
And Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, item HI, item I.
Do the, do the Sarter no? Jim, you're going to let Sarter know?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll wait until I run it tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, the 2022 chloride contract. Board members, last year, we voted, the first vote was for four chlorides. It was a very dry year, we went with five. It was of great benefits to our road, roads in, in the county. What we're asking for is, we're going to, we would like to recommend approval for the same five applications of chloride in 2022. Talking to our new foreman, Colin Campbell, our roads desperately need grading and they desperately need chloriding to protect them and to build them up for the upcoming year. So I'm, I'm asking for five applications of chloride in 2022 for the total of, oh, I left my paper in there, 66,000. Do we have a total on that?
353 and 60, I'll, I'll go down to it.
Thank you.
We're at the bottom.
66,097 dollars and 34 cents. Yes, sir, Treasurer.
I'm going to make this motion, but also at the end, I'm going to add in also, can you use some of the money from telecommunications? That's been sitting there for a couple of years, so at your, whatever you wanted to put the first bill towards it, just so we can spend out some of that money too.
Okay.
I move that the Charter Township of Oxford contract with the Road Commission of Oakland County to provide chloride services for 2022 on all public gravel roads in the Charter Township of Oxford. Acquired costs will be paid 100% by the Charter Township of Oxford for five applications at the rate of $7.29, 0.0729 cents per foot, per, per application. The cost for the chloride service to be expensed to the road fund, account 20444969000, how Romanus contracts and/or telecommunications fund, 239807969.000.
A second?
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Uh, Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
And Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Motion carries. 11J, HIJ, ordinance review committee request for funding, Trusting Noel, Trustee Noel?
Board members, ordinance review committee has gotten together and put a list of things to do for the, for the first part of this year. We got with our consultant, put a limit of 225 dollars, 225 hours not to exceed, to do this work with the ordinance review committee. The planning commission approved it. I'd like to suggest I move to forward, I move to authorize the Oxford Township Planning Commission, ordinance review committee to proceed with the completing the zoning ordinance amendment priority list dated February 14th, 2022, with the assistance of Oxford Township Planner Carlisle and Wortman, associates not to exceed 225 hours. The cost for the Carlisle's and Wortman associate not to exceed 225 hours to be expended to the planning commission's account of 101701801000, planner professional services.
I will second that.
I have a motion by Trustee Noel, a second by Treasurer Ferrari. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
And Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Okay, item 11K, Oxford Township Support Emergency Operations Plan Amendments. Trustee Noel?
Board members, I had an opportunity to go through the support emergency operation plan in a little bit of detail. There's some updating that needs to be done, and there's also some areas that we need to review to make sure we have the appropriate people to do those. So I move to authorize Supervisor Jack Curtis, John Noel, and Pete Schultz to make the necessary amendments to the Oxford Township Support Emergency Operation Plan and present it to the Oxford Township Board of Trustees for consideration of approval at the April 13th, 2022 regular meeting.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Trustee Noel, a second by Treasurer Ferrari. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Uh, let's see, item 11L, Michigan Senate Bill 653, History Museum Authorities Act. Trustee Charles?
For those not familiar with it, it's a proposal in the State Senate right now to potentially raise property taxes in Wayne and Oakland Counties to pay for museums in the city of Detroit. It's a proposal, it's in the State Senate, was voted out of committee, it's a, as it says here, it's a .4 mil for 20 years. According to some estimates, be about $40 million for these museums. More importantly, would cover, would tax people in our township for museums in the city of Detroit. So what we have here is a resolution opposing this tax, or this potential tax, and just to let you know what's going on right now in the State Senate, thanks to the efforts of a lot of residents here in Oxford and other places, it's dormant, it's not necessarily dead. I did talk with two state senators today before the meeting. At the very least, I was informed that Oakland County will be removed from this bill, which is good, but it still leaves Wayne County on the hook, and they're hoping to take this bill and totally kill it. But right now, it's still sitting there, hopefully it'll never rise, but I was also told that if we do have a resolution, it would help put, put an end to this, this Bill 653.
You know, this is the perfect example of communications in our office. Treasurer Ferrari got, he gets a Crane's magazine and gets this article, he sent it to me, I sent it to Trustee Charles, and I sent it to the rest of the board members. The amount of activity that started here spread to the Oakland County Association of Township Supervisors. It then spread to the Oakland County chapter of the Michigan Townships Association. Had we not read that article, the Senate would have just felt, well, they, I guess they don't mind it, so we just caught it, we're, we're putting together a resolution. I think the Senate knows that a lot of townships in Oakland County do not want to participate in this property tax, and they've, they've stated right now, like Trustee Charles said, they're taking Oakland County off it. But what we're suggesting is, we take a vote on approving this resolution, and should that bill move forward with Oakland County, we would then present the resolution to our Senate.
I move to approve the resolution, our Senate Bill 653 as presented.
I second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, and a second by Trustee Charles. I saw one hand go up. Clerk Wright?
Yes, on, on the way the resolution is presented, our resolutions don't reflect how this is laid out, and I don't know if this is correct or not, maybe Attorney Rentrapp has the answer, but usually the clerk, clerk will sign the resolutions and not the supervisor. So I, I don't know, from my vantage point, whether or not that needs to be amended.
We can amend that.
I'd recommend a quorum.
Okay.
I'll amend, so we got to vote on this, then do an amendment, or how do we got to do this?
That's how we do it, right?
Okay.
It's the cleanest way.
I'm sorry, boys, that's the cleanest way.
Is it vote on this, then vote on an amendment?
So discussion first and then?
Okay.
Got it.
I'll call the roll.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, no, and Trustee Charles?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution in regard to Senate Bill 653 with amendments to reflect Oxford Township resolutions.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel, but I think we made a mistake.
So you approved the first one, now you're approving the second one.
Going to do with the amendments, we're amending what we approved.
But we need to, oh, all right, let's ask for clarification. We approved an am-
You approved it as presented.
We approved it as presented.
Now we're amending it.
Okay. I think that's why Curtis voted no in the first motion.
Well, should we just redo it, is that possible?
I thought we're just amending, we have it, now we're amending it.
Let Clerk Wright?
What, what I would do is, I would vote this motion down again, then I would vote to rescind the original motion, and then vote accordingly with the, with the change of the, the rest of the court.
So what we're doing, what we're do-
I'll withdraw my motion.
No.
Right, then Mr. Noel can withdraw support, wouldn't even vote on it.
You can't withdraw a motion that's already been voted on.
No, the second one.
All right, come on up to the lectern.
Well, the substance, if I understand it correctly, the substance of the motion stays the same.
Correct.
Correct.
Just do a simple amendment to correct the signature on it.
That's what I do.
Okay.
And to put it in our format, whatever.
So now Clerk Wright has a question. But you, you've already voted to approve the resolution as-
That's fine, you can change that, the substance of the resolution stays exactly the same.
Okay. You're voting to change the signature.
Yeah, you really didn't approve what's shown there, you approved the substance.
The body.
See, I'm not a cop, I'm not a school administrator, I'm not an attorney.
And you're not a clerk.
Man, all right, so what we have to do now is, the motion and second that's on the floor, we have to, if you want to amend the first motion by changing the signatory, we would vote yes. If you don't want to, you would vote no.
Okay, I'll call the roll. Trustee Charles?
Yes, to be naked, right, just to make sure, so yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
And Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Okay, John, you're, Trustee Noel, you're up on 11M, and here we go. Single trash hauler for Oxford Township.
Hey, Jack, can I, you know, just real quick, I can let John catch a, one comment about, you said the input from the community was from the Crane's article, actually, a lot of people were on top of this well before that came out.
Well, no one in this room knew about it until we found out about it here. If they did, they were withholding information. So I'm glad everybody else knew and didn't say anything, but I was praising the people that did say something in this room.
Well, there were a lot of people working on it before now.
Yeah, I'm sure there were, but nobody worked with us on it. Item M, single trash hauler for Oxford Township. Trustee Noel?
I've had the opportunity of visiting some local area communities, talked over with them of, of the success of a single trash hauler. I've heard many residents issuing the same concern, they like to have a single trash hauler for two reasons, one for cost, another reason is to get the traffic off the road. So I'd like to move to authorize Trustee Noel, Trustee Payne, and Trustee Curtis to investigate the possibility of a single trash hauler for Oxford Township, and to report back to the committee in June of 2022, regular scheduled board meeting.
Is that Supervisor Curtis or Trustee Charles?
Curtis.
Or, or Clerk Wright.
I don't know who the Curtis person is.
Uh, it would be Clerk Wright, thank you.
Thank you.
Was there some sweating going on down there?
There was. I just got demoted from president to-
Well, that's okay.
Mayor to-
Clerk Wright.
Okay, I have a motion by Trustee Noel.
You're just going to explore it, right?
Second, did we get a second?
And a second by Trustee Payne, to explore the singer, single trash hauler for Oxford Township. Okay, any questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Motion carries. Items removed from the consent agenda, there were none. Second call for public comment. Anybody in the public like to make a comment? Seeing none, Board of Trustees comment. I'm going to start down with Trustee Colvin.
I would just like to thank Mr. Tetter and Commissioner Spiz for all the week, uh, work they've done to help our community after, we all know the tragic day of last November. Thank you very much.
I have nothing.
Trustee Noel?
I think I've said enough, thank you.
Treasurer Ferrari?
I'd like to thank this board, we had a big agenda tonight, and we got through a lot of different issues, and we do a lot of different improvements in this community that is going to be reflective in the years to come.
Trustee Charles?
Agree with Trustee Colvin about Mr. Spiz and Mr. Tetter, I know Mr. Tetter originally contacted me, and I contacted Mr. Curtis, or, sorry, President Curtis, great idea to contribute, so I like that. A couple other things going on here, the Downtown Development Authority, the trolley's been a great success anecdotally, but we're looking for some input from the community about where we go from here. It's a DDA event right now, but we're looking for ideas because the pilot project is coming to an end as of March 31st. We've got private funding covering, covering it for the period ending March 31st, and Monday, we have a meeting going on where somebody else might cover it all way until it's December, just to let you know. And then we also have some things going on to the DDA Board. Two of our board members were selected by Oakland County BD40 under 40, Ashley Ross and Kelly Westbrook, so I'm kind of proud to say that, both board members. And then, let's see here, March 7th, Monday through the end of this month, the Oxford Addison Youth Assistance, I'm a member of that board, we're having a bop, uh, bop, that's a new word, bottle and pop can drive to, and we're splitting that with the Polly and Trail, so if you have cans and bottles you want to get rid of after this long winter, then take them over to the Oxford Police Department by the garage there, put them in a bag, and we'll take them to Meyer and get a refund and distribute the money as I said. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Wright? Yeah, just like to echo the thank you to Mr. Tetter and Commissioner Spiz, probably add you Supervisor Curtis, because you've been instrumental in a lot of things too on that. Also, just, I'll keep reminding people that if you're interested in the vacant trustee position in November, your petitions are due April 19th by 4:00 PM, to get that, get your name on the ballot in August. Also, there was a House bill that I responded to Senator Baier on- Also, there was a House bill that I responded to Senator Baier on to potential clerks determined to expand voting precincts without having to create new voting precincts. So I offered my comments for her to support that bill if it comes to that vote, because we have probably three precincts that are borderline of needing to be realigned, I'll put it that way. So that's something that the Election Commission will be looking at at our June meeting for the August election. We appoint election inspectors, so keep that on your radar or your agenda. The last thing is that, and I'm just curious on this one, just happened to read the planning commission meeting minutes from the twenty-fourth of February indicating creating a committee that will look for completeness on applications. I just wondered, is that something that would be necessary? Because the, I think it'd be a responsibility of the administrative staff versus the committee to do that, but I just, I just happened to see it, so I thought I'd comment on it and I don't know what it's about, but that's my comment. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, best for last. You know, just as much as I try to praise everybody around our office, our employees, us as elected officials, I just want to take a moment to encourage Township Board members and Township employees to please be mindful of how you can, how your conduct and dress reflects on Oxford Township. Like it or not, when you're in a township office or attending a community event, your words, actions, and attire are being scrutinized and judged by members of the public. That's why it's so very important for all of us to consistently conduct ourselves in a manner that's professional, respectful, and dignified. When one of us falls short to these expectations and tarnishes the township's image, we at the township suffer. The residents suffer and the community suffers. That's wholly unacceptable. As elected officials, we ought to, the people in this township, we represent, to behave in a way that brings honor to them in a place we call home. I wanted to read that and I don't think we need to have any conversation on it unless you wanna come to my office and talk to me. But this other topic I want to talk about is township office lights were replaced with LED. The proposed DTE rebate savings is north of thirteen hundred, closer to fourteen hundred dollars. Danielle filled that met with DTE and the electrician filled out the rebate form, so we have better lighting and it will reduce our monthly DTE bill for our township. But we got a lot of that money paid for through a rebate. Tough Mudder is coming, June seventeenth, eighteenth, and nineteenth. We will have mini contracts in place for our police and for our fire support. They're gonna meet with us in May to set those contracts up. Assistant Chief Matt, this will be your first year on this one, won't it? No, second. They did, you were here last, that's right. Pocket parks, our members and representatives of the DDA. I've had three calls this week about people having wonderful ideas of buying property in the village to open a small park for kids to hang out in, play basketball, trees, picnic tables. We can't, we can't and have no control over that. If the DDA wants to get involved or the village wants to get involved, I'm gonna start sending these people to the DDA board and to the village board because no one wants to put a small park out here for the kids to come out here. Their, all their activities are in the village. So beware, I'm gonna be sending phone calls, you guys wait. Okay? With that, item number fifteen.
I'll make a motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Payne. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, thank you.
Thank you.